Call a meeting to order, please rise for to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just want to say that our thoughts and prayers go out to the hundreds of thousands of people who have been affected by the wildfires in the state of California and those that have lost their lives and homes. It's our sincere hope and certainly we pray for those and thank all the first responders and everybody that's contributing out there. Call for them, a motion for the acceptance in a minute to the December tenth, twenty twenty four meeting. Been moved and seconded, discussion. All those in favor? Opposed, no one, motion carries. Call for the motion for the acceptance in a minute to the December eighteenth, twenty twenty four meeting. Been moved, seconded, discussion. All those in favor? Opposed, no one, motion carries. Public forum for this evening. Just to go over some of the ground rules, the three minutes to speak and no specific students may be mentioned or personnel. Call to the podium, Patrick DeShawn, talk about grade weighting.
Did you clap? I would say thank you, but I don't want to name a specific student. But I appreciate it. Good evening, everyone. Appreciate giving you, giving me some time here. I'm here to speak tonight on behalf of a concerned group of parents and students about our grade weighting policy and class rank. Our district's policy for weighting grades for advanced placement classes and college-level courses is lagging behind other school districts in the area and thus hurting our children's ability to be competitive in the college application process. Our children were identified as being candidates for accelerated coursework almost six years ago at the end of their elementary school. This means that they have worked harder and achieved more than is required to finish high school at the top of their class. The students here tonight are the cream of our crop. Since ninth grade, they have been enrolled in AP courses and college courses offered through SUNY Ulster, SUNY New Paltz, and Syracuse University. These courses are not required for graduation, but they have had their minds set on higher education since junior high and they have not faltered. When we first began discussing this issue as a group, it was based on class ranking and how our district's policies surrounding it are hurting our college-bound students. To quote the school board's policy on class rank, the weighted grades averages used to calculate class rank for college admissions and the determination of honor graduates. The New York Science, Technology, Engineering, and Mathematics, or STEM, incentive program provides tuition awards for students who graduate in the top ten percent of their high school class and pursue a degree in STEM at any SUNY or Cooney college. Being in the top ten percent is an achievement that will save our students tens of thousands of dollars over the next several years. We were very disheartened to learn that this past summer, some of our students who have taken these accelerated courses since seventh grade were pushed out of the top ten percent by the inclusion of the PTEC Academy, whose members are transitioning to SUNY Ulster for grades thirteen and fourteen of that program. This has had serious financial repercussions for some of our families and we do not see the logic in including the PTEC Academy in class rank calculations due to the lack of college admissions as stated in the board policy. Having had several productive meetings with our school superintendent and assistant superintendents, we were able to gather information about other school districts' course weighting. Many schools had weighting systems that are multiple percentage points higher than Ellenville. That means our students are sending college transcripts with equally rigorous coursework as Rondell students, for example, but with lower GPAs. This puts them at a disadvantage right from the start. Merit scholarships and honor awards are also linked to GPA calculations. So once again, our students are facing financial hardships due to this policy. We urge you to bring our district's class rank and weighted grade policy in line with other districts and help our students who have risen to every challenge we've offered them. They are our best and they deserve the best. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. DeShawn. Call to the podium, Johanna Neville.
Hi, my name's Johanna Neville, a senior in Ellenville Senior High School. It was previously stated that it is impossible to measure rigor and therefore it could not be, could not be argued that PTEC classes are not as rigorous. Traditional students are given eight periods a day taken by a teacher instruction where PTEC students are given specific periods where they receive one-on-one assistance with their teachers. Sorry. Right now, I am enrolled in AP Government and Politics, English Composition One through SUNY New Paltz, Algebra and Trigonometry, and Biology through SUNY Ulster. While PTEC students are taking Robotics, Cybersecurity, and Manufacturing courses through Bosie's, gym classes, an elective and an English class at SUNY Ulster every other day, and they also have an academic workshop dedicated to helping them with that class. PTEC also is a place with, also places heavy emphasis on presentation as business and technology are central to the program. So while these students are being graded on their elevator pitches, I've been studying for five exams I have this week for each of my college classes. I have been in the same classes with these students up until high school, but the day they enrolled in PTEC, the standards for our separate academic performances shifted dramatically. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Neville. On a call, Kayla. Sorry, Barbaria?
Barbari.
Barbari, that was close.
I am one of two students who took the initiative in eighth grade to take the Regents exam for a living environment and algebra during the pandemic, where my fellow accelerated classmates took the option to opt out due to the pandemic. This means I've completed a total of ten Regents exams since I was thirteen, double the five required Regents courses PTEC students completed. And while they take intensive courses of their own, the two are not comparable. PTEC students are focused on a specific pathway and have equally specific assistance. Where they focus on technology and business, my course is focused on preparing students for higher education. PTEC is bringing career experience and tech-based education to them, so they do not need to attend college or grad school. There's something to be said about where we are headed after graduation. I'm applying to competitive schools, scholarships, and honors programs in which rank may help me and students like me achieve better. PTEC already has a plan and courses set for them if they so choose to continue it. It is not nearly as critical that they get the titles, the rankings, and the numbers under their belt when they've known they've had a set path for four years.
Thank you. Riley DeShawn.
Since seventh grade, we have taken accelerated courses such as honors math and science, Supa US History, and all AP classes offered at Ellenville, World History, and Gov. and Politics. During this time, we were led to believe that if we worked hard, we would be recognized for our efforts. However, we were blindsided to learn that students enrolled in PTEC have a special advantage, which has bumped many other students out of the top ten or twenty in class rankings. The PTEC classes are not nearly as rigorous as our classes. Fundamental PTEC courses are taught through hands-on experience rather than lecture and exam. Their students spend half the day at Bosie's collaborating in workshops and the other half at Ellenville in the cafeteria, gym, and study halls. They're taught to convince people to buy their business pitches. We're taught to use formulas, recall world history, and understand the world around us. Even though these classes are not nearly as rigorous, they are marketed as college-level classes. These classes are much easier than, say, calculus or chemistry because they're considered college classes, but the PTEC courses have an extra weighting attached to them. Therefore, many PTEC students who take less rigorous classes have pushed students out of the class ranking that would have worked incredibly hard over the last six years to not only take but also excel in actual college-level courses. We would argue that higher-level Regents classes such as physics and geometry, which have zero extra weighting, are more rigorous than the PTEC classes. Additionally, all of us here have taken AP, Supa, and other college-level courses. These courses are weighted at five percent. Mrs. Wiles's office, office, did research and discovered that Ellenville's weighting system is at the lower end than the vast majority of area districts. The majority of the other districts weigh their classes as high as ten percent. When asked if Ellenville would consider changing the weighting policy, we were told probably not this year because it wouldn't be fair to students who may have taken more college-level courses had they known they would be weighted higher. We would like to argue the reverse. What you're doing to us this year is not fair. For six years, we have worked and excelled. Saying you will change, maybe change this policy in the future is not doing the right thing by us. You're letting us down. The class ranking is impacting us as we apply for colleges, scholarships, honors programs, and internships. We were told the rankings shouldn't matter that much. Instead, colleges will also be looking at the courses we took and the effort we gave. But how holistically a school will look at applications varies from place to place and also can't be measured. This belittles the hard work we put into place the last six years and puts us at a disadvantage against students with more academic opportunities. What lesson does this send to students coming after us? That Ellenville is telling younger students is that if they take easier classes, their GPAs will be higher and they will move up in the class rankings? I would ask that the board please reconsider evaluating Ellenville's class weighting system. Please do right by all students, not just the PTEC kids.
Thank you, Riley. First and foremost, I want to say to the young ladies that came up here and spoke, not an easy task to come up and speak in front of an audience, especially when you're on TV. Certainly proud of each, each and every one of you, very, very, very fluent and very eloquent in your presentations and we thank you for that. And we take everything that you say to heart. We, we listen, we hear you. We are, I have directed this issue be taken back up by the Policy Committee. It's being referred back to the Policy Committee. Policy Committee will take a look at exactly what you have said. They will examine everything and they will report back to the, to the whole board once they have met. We have Iris Freeman. We want to get a meeting together for other Policy Committee as soon as possible and that will be one of the issues that the Policy Committee tackles amongst others. Well, certainly they'll be looking at that. Is there anything you'd like to add, Superintendent?
No, I, I think Marisol and I spoke today about getting a policy meeting set, you know, in the next couple of weeks. Probably set quite a few of them. There's various policies that need to be reviewed, but this will be the first one that we.
So just want to be clear so you understand there's a process to this, right? We cannot, as a board, arbitrarily make a decision here when we have policies in place. The, the correct procedure is to refer something back to the Policy Committee, have them make the recommendations to the whole board. It would be, it would be improper and certainly not prudent for the board to make an arbitrary decision without referring it back to the Policy Committee in light of the fact that there's already a standing policy. Iris?
Yeah, I just would like to ask the Superintendent, when we convene the meeting, if she would have the list of the schools in the area and what their weight, weighting policy is and their, and their weight percentages?
We did put out a request from certain districts to let us know. We did get information back from a few, not all, so Mrs. White will make sure to put that back out again to see if we can compile some additional schools that were non-responsive.
And we'll hear from Marisol about arranging a meeting for a time?
Yes, we talked about that yesterday.
Thank you.
And if there's any other information you need, please don't hesitate to ask. Is there anything you want to supply to the administration for the Policy Committee to take into consideration?
I can't hear him.
Can't hear you, Pat, I'm sorry. Yeah, go back up there, please.
So I would just ask that if the board could look at the current policy at one of our positions, the board policy is that weighted grades are used for the purpose of college admissions and honor graduates so that certain students that are in the class of twenty twenty-five cohort in the PTEC program, which is a New York State education-approved program that is a grade nine through fourteen program, that they are not looking for college admissions. They are already part of this dual program with SUNY Ulster. So they, from our opinion, would not be included in that weighted average because they are not applying to colleges.
So thank you for that, Pat, and the board, the Policy Committee chairs here and they will definitely take that into consideration. Jody?
Can we also get information with other schools that have the PTEC program, how they weight their grades and how and if the top ten percent is affected?
Yes, so there's one other school that we know of that has a school within a school. The other PTEC program, we'll ask the question. We'll ask the question to see how it's included.
Any other board members?
Even if it's not within our district, can we check with PTEC programs throughout New York State?
How, how it's included for those students?
If they're with school within a school.
Yeah.
Ms. Neville?
I had a very unique experience where I have.
I'm sorry, I can't understand you.
I'm sorry.
Could you speak a little more clearly?
Yeah, I've had a very unique experience where my entire life I have worked very hard to excel in all of my classes. And within these past few months, I have been looking into colleges and applications and SUNY, the SUNY program sent out a top-ten-percent promise, which I was qualified for, but I was pushed out of because of the PTEC being included in the top ten. So before I have already committed to a college, I've already lost hundreds of dollars in application fees when that would have been already promised to me, which is very frustrating, which I understand that's not something you guys can control, but it would have been prevented by the PTEC not being included in the top ten or them having something separate as in a different ranking. That's all I'd like to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Neville. Anybody else to be heard on this matter? John?
Yeah, Phil, I was going to wait till the board comments to say this. I just want to say to students and the parents, I'm completely in awe of what you've done and how high you've achieved. I was not capable of doing that in high school and, and I think it's really amazing. I think the thing that I nor, but nobody else wants to get into here is a PTEC students versus honors or advanced college students, you know, competition. I'm also in awe of our PTEC students who have made such progress coming out of the coursework that they've had and made a six-year commitment to do what they do. I will say this, I've mentioned to the board members before my concern that perhaps we mishandled this and I'm not above make, you know, admitting to making a mistake. I think our job is to, to correct those things. I was told that this is what the state has always done and it was from a state decision and my point of view is that we didn't handle it properly in notifying you folks with enough time to get that done. I can promise you that I will advocate to justify the weighted grades going forward and I understand the frustration you have with colleges when you've worked so hard to achieve what you have. And I, I can promise you that I will do my best to try and take care of that and I am sorry that you got to your senior year before you found this out.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. Anybody else? Okay, thank you. Thank you, parents. Very proud of you guys for coming in and we will definitely, the Policy Committee will take a serious look at this and they will dig into it as fast as possible and we'll get back to you. Okay, thank you. If you want to stay, you can. I'm sure you don't want to, but you're more than welcome to stay. So for, we're going to move on to reports and correspondence. So for myself and speaking with the superintendent and also with some of the board members, there's been a lot said about the, about the arts. As you know, we went through a lot with the, with the referendum and different things. We want to make sure that every aspect of the arts and not just music is heard, right? There's different components to arts. It's not just about music. It's about all the arts when we talk about the, the arts. So we want to, in, in conferring with the superintendent, we feel it's prudent to establish an, an arts committee and I would like the people, the board members, the following board members to sit on that committee and if this is a surprise, which it is, I'm not going to apologize in advance. So I would like if Iris Freeman would sit on it, Lisa Ramirez, Willie Bruce, and Jody, and if Jody would take the, the chair. Is that good? Sufficient? And then I'm going to refer back to the superintendent because there are going to be some administrators on it. They'll talk about, you guys will meet at, at this committee to talk about initiatives, what's going on. I want to be perfectly clear that, and the superintendent wants me to make sure I drive this home as well. I'm going to be extremely clear about what the, the purpose is. We are not there to negotiate with art, any form of the art, any art teachers or staff that's in there. If any of these initiatives or discussions even borderline that, that's why you'll have the superintendent there, you'll have any delegates that she sees deems fit there, those discussions will be halted and they will be referred back to the district and to the union for the proper venue for negotiation. So while this committee is important in its job and what we want, and what we expect because we want to hear what the initiatives are and we want to hear what goes on in our school district, we want to see that to be successful as well and the recognition to be there. And I know that I had talked a couple of years ago and established a, an arts Hall of Fame. We wanted to do an Arts Hall of Fame. It really never took off. It really never got its, you know, never got its mustard, so to speak. But this could sort of roll into that. We have this kind of, this kind of committee and everybody puts their heads together and maybe we can get something like that. So the recognition that our different components of the arts takes place can also be recognized as well as athletics because John does a superb job with the Athletic Hall of Fame and all the people that he has the support. We could also have something similar with the arts as part of this initiative, but we'll see where it goes. You guys will establish a meeting. Superintendent will be in touch with everybody and we will go from there.
I just want to also make a comment. We will have, we will have representatives from the faculty on, you know, working with the committee also on ideas, thoughts, their initiatives. I, just to go back to what Phil says, I just want to make sure we don't discuss anything contractual at those meetings, really initiatives, things we could, you know, possibly fund, other activities. So really a brainstorming committee for how we can, you know, promote the arts in our district and enhance and expand.
Just make sure it's an equal playing field basically is that everybody gets heard and, and we can promote where we can promote.
So I, I'd just like to share an interesting little aside. So there's a chamber music concert tomorrow night with the high school and I think junior high. And I, I knew about it and I looked on the calendar and on the calendar it just says that there's this chamber concert, no place, no time. When I looked on the front of the website, down the side, there are a lot of write-ups about different events not to mention. So maybe that's, would be one of the places we could start is to get the information correct and get it out there about what they already are doing. I, I was surprised because I looked at other events on the calendar, on the paper calendar, mind you, and they had times and places for all these events and that was missing. So it's odd to me that, I, I don't know why those kind of things are happening, but that's part of what we have to really look at.
I also want to make sure, because we do bring in, you know, we bring in the fall athletics, we bring in the summer, you know, the spring athletic, those that are, you know, teams to be recognized. I want to make sure that we bring to the board, Superintendent, if you can make a, a point of this, any of those students who have achieved some special recognition with the arts programs and any component of the arts so that we can recognize them as well in this forum, just like we recognize everybody else. So let's make sure that we make a point of that. Lisa? The beauty of.
In a, in a one-sentence mission, what, what do we see as the problem and the goal that you're forming a special committee?
I don't think that there's a problem. I think the mission or the charge of the committee would be to go back, meet with the administration and the faculty and faculty, different faculty members at, at the discretion of the superintendent and her staff and to, to come up with what, what can, what can we do? Like what can we do to have some initiatives for the arts to be more recognition? What is there, what do they need and what can we help them with to make this program and any of the components of the arts more successful in our district?
So, so essentially raise the profile of our offerings?
The recognition of it, right, and raise the profile. Because obviously there's, there's work to be done and, and not just in the other side of it, right? There's work to be done for all components of the arts and there's work that, and, and we can help and, and we can help in whatever way we can and the administration can help. Let them be heard, let people be heard and let's see what we can do to work together to collaborate, to bring more attention and more focus and success to the program and maybe get more participation in it as a result. Okay, that's all I have. Other board members? John? And by the way, thank you on the job you do on the Hall of Fame.
Well, thank you. I, I want to just congratulate you and Lisa for bringing forth this initiative about the arts. I know everybody on the board really enjoys celebrating any of the achievements that our students do and I think that will help us continue our efforts there. I did want to mention, speaking of the Hall of Fame, that we are working on the Hall of Fame wall display for the upcoming building improvements. We're going to have a Hall of Fame wall where, where the current athletic director's office is and so we, we're beginning to start to chase down some pictures going as back far as we can. I'm working with our athletic director, Tim Lukazewski, and eventually the architects in putting this wall together. So anybody that even wants to contact us and, and has pictures of the past going backwards, we'd like to take a look at that. And while I'm mentioning the Hall of Fame, we are currently open for nominations for next year's class and I'd like to encourage anyone who thinks they know of a Hall of Fame-worthy candidate, team, or coach to nominate them. You can find the forms on our district website or call the athletic director's office so we can have another great induction next fall. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other board members? Yes, Willie. Okay. We, we promise there'll be snacks if you want to come.
Willie, is your mic on, please?
Is it working now? Can you hear me now? Can we have the, I'd like to understand when the top-ten rankings are published?
The top-ten rankings are calculated and published at the, after the end of the second semester in accordance with the policy that we have.
After the end of the second semester?
Second quarter, first semester. Sorry about that.
Thank you. So then around this time?
Right, probably the end of January after all the tests and grades are submitted. So usually it's not the end of January. It'll be sometime in February after it's calculated, usually the end of February.
I, I would ask that the board be provided with those rankings when they're available, please?
Oh, of course.
Tonight was the first time I seen public session handled the way it was. And I'll just leave that there. So in the future, I would expect public session to be handled in a very similar manner as tonight.
Can you elaborate, please?
Certainly. So typically in public session, people who want to speak are given a certain amount of time to, to present to the board or address the board. Usually there is no response from board members to the folks who, who are addressing the board. In addition to that, people are not allowed to return to the podium, to the podium after they have used their time. So I would just like to understand, I would just like to make it plain that I would expect now in the future that public session be conducted the same way since it's been changed. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'd like to, I'm sorry.
I, I'm not sure about that, Willie. I'm not comfortable with it.
That's what happened, Iris.
I like, you know, the way that, when it's more organized. I don't know why it was allowed to proceed this way tonight. I guess that's a question for the chair.
Well, I don't, I don't, I'm not questioning it. I just want to, okay, well, I'll, I'll leave that for you.
John?
In the past, we've been told that the comments back to people who come to the board would be handled by the president. board would be handled by the president and the superintendent, and I can respect that. I think that to lock ourselves in, I mean, I've been around a long time, Willie, I've seen a lot of board meetings and a lot of districts get really out of hand with stuff. The three-minute limit, you know, sometimes you give a little bit more on that and if you have 25 people speaking, we're here till tomorrow morning. So it's, it's kind of a difficult thing. I think the one thing that we've put out to the public, Mr. President and Madam Superintendent, is that we will listen to people when they have concerns. It's their district, it's our district. We all do the best that we can. And I think that sometimes, Willie, you might have to just give a little bit, you know, the young man that spoke to us a couple of meetings ago, we gave him, you know, more time and I thought that was just a great thing we did. So I'd like to see us continue to evaluate situations. Of course, again, that is up to the president and the board, but to evaluate situations and make sure we continue to let people know we hear them out when they have concerns about our district and our kids.
I do not disagree with that, Trustee Burns. I'm in 100% support of that.
All right.
Didn't mean to put you on the spot there, Mr. President.
No, no, that's okay. It's okay. Feedback is always important and sometimes when we're in the moment, I will just say that we were in the moment. I think it's important to hear from our students. And I think sometimes when issues like this come up, I don't think that as a board we should shut it down. I think the dialogue is important. I hear you, Willie. I think that it has to be applied equally and consistently across the board. But I do not want to be a board that's known to shut our students down. And I think it's imperative that these young people have a voice. I think they went about it the proper way. I think they want it to be heard. And I think it's incumbent upon this board to hear from each and every individual student and member of our community. Whether it takes, whether it takes, whether it takes the shape of a curve ball now and then, it takes the shape of a curve ball. This was a little bit of a curve ball, but I thought that in sitting where I'm sitting, I thought it was very important that we listen to our, our young people. Our young people are the future leaders who are going to be sitting in our chairs someday. And Abraham Lincoln said that very eloquently when he delivered his speech several times from his podium in Washington. So I think that the more we continue to hear our young people, maybe we'll get more people to come here and speak. So we will, I definitely will take that under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you, Phil. Thank you for the explanation.
Mr. Jack Henry, speaking of hearing from our young people.
Good evening. So for happenings and events, school will not be in session next week because regents week will be next week.
I think you need to clarify that, Jack. The high school-
Oh, the high school, yes.
Yeah, the junior, senior high school, because all of a sudden you'll have all the elementary staying home.
Oh. So rehearsals for both shows, Bama Mia for the senior high is now underway. The junior high production of Beetlejuice will also be in early February. Tomorrow night for Iris here, the senior high band will perform in their evening of chamber music at 7:00 in the elementary auditorium. So it's only the senior high at 7:00 in the Ellenville Elementary Music Assembly Room. For athletics, last week, the boys' basketball team won 65 to 16 triple overtime last Tuesday. They have a game against Highland at 6:00 on Friday at home. The girls varsity basketball is on the road against Liberty tomorrow and on Highland on Friday. And then both teams were at home this past Friday to raise money for the American Cancer Society as well as honoring three people in the district who are currently battling cancer. The three people that were honored were Isabella Neville, Mrs. Dams, and Mrs. Stico. Both teams won decisively against Dover in the back-to-back. Finally, for the fundraisers, Class of 2026 has finished a bund cake fundraiser which is due tomorrow. And because it's New Year, there's new merchandise for sale. If you'd like to buy Blue Devils merchandise, you can go to tinyurl.com/ecsdmerch or you can use the QR code.
Thank you, Jack. Move on to Assistant Superintendent Lisa Wallace.
A few things this evening. I just want to remind the board that next Tuesday at 5:30 we'll be having a construction workshop, the first one to lay out some timelines and expectations of the capital project that was approved in December. There's information in your packet about it. It'll be 5:30 in the media center. There's, no, it is not a public meeting in that. There'll be no action taken. It's just a workshop and we will have the representatives from our design team and so forth there. We did have the opportunity to meet with the town of Worthing with regard to the grant that they have with the pool and the timing of the work that's going to be done on the pool through the grant and the, and the building of the concession stand slash multipurpose room that'll be utilized by the town for the summertime. So they are moving forward with the grant and we are in close contact with them. They've been to some of our meetings to make sure that we are coordinating and collaborating on the, on the timeline. Next Tuesday, no, excuse me, next Thursday, the 23rd, there's going to be an Ulster County School Boards meeting. The invitation's in your packet. At Kingston, I believe, at the Best Western. I don't know of the time, but it's in the invitation. This is, annually, they have the legislators that represent our school districts there to talk about legislative priorities and what the outlook is with regard to the upcoming budget process. School board members can submit any questions or clarifications that they want. So take a look at that flyer. I think it's, it would be great if anybody wants to go, just let Marisol know and we will respond for you. Along the same lines, we are waiting patiently with high expectations, hopefully, that we're not disappointed on what the governor's proposal is going to be for the state aid for the 25, 20 school, 26 school year. Just remember, whatever comes out, that's not the final number. There'll be negotiations that happen during the process. We're kind of used to this, but the governor should be releasing the proposal that she has sometime at the end of January. So we're waiting for that. Just one comment I want to make about the website. I know while the, just really live time, Vince took a look at the events and we've been struggling with the website a little bit. Remember, this is a new website and there's a whole section on events. And it's driven by our building use forms and other information that gets fed in there. So we're going to take a look at this and really try to see how we can feed it because if you go down and click a box that says all events, things are listed there. But we also have things that are listed there that might not be meaningful to the public to look at it. We're not sure. We have, we're going to have to reach out to Bosse's and Aptige to see what other type of options we have to highlight certain events and not others. But we have been working on it. We have been struggling with it. You know, we don't, not only is the concerts not on here, but any of our competitions are not on here. So like we want to look at everything to see how we can make it more user-friendly for our parents because I don't think, we need a little work on it. So, you know, we'll get on that tomorrow. So it's there, but it's buried. So we have to. And what happens, just so you all know, when we have a building use form that comes in, let's say, I'm looking at this, the YMCA schools out before and after school, that's every day and that's there, right? So does that really have to be there? Not necessarily. So we just implemented a new building use form and on it we have, does this want to be on the website or not on the website? So that we can, we can, we can enter it in the system and have it, have it either show or not show depending upon what we have. So we're in the process of putting that together, but we are going to take a look at this.
I just want a quick question. I noticed on the right-hand side of the homepage, it says live at the top and then there, there are write-ups about different things. Who does that? Who does the writing for that and submit that?
So live feeds can come from anybody, right? So it comes through the administrators. It gets submitted to Ulster Bosse's and they'll, they'll add a live feed. We can add it also. Sometimes we'll call Tim and Alan and say, I'm not sure if they're doing it anymore, but they used to do it. Mostly it's Ulster Bosse's that does it. We don't have a full-time PR person here on staff that does it. We contract-
So someone sends them the information and they write something up and then, and then put it on the, I see. Okay, thank you.
And you get to pick on the website, we got to pick different formats that you could use. And we picked the most, what we thought was the most user-friendly, but how we're feeding the information in. We've had to modify a few times since we went live with this. Doesn't mean that we won't modify it again.
Thank you. Assistant Superintendent for Business, Mr. Vince Napoli.
Thank you. We've been patiently waiting to see if the governor would kick down the road the can about the electric school buses and that has not happened. So we've been patiently waiting and watching other schools venture down the road of grants. And so we met with Beacon Mobility. They're the company that purchased Rolling V and we decided to, with them or through them, apply for an electric bus grant. There's no obligation on our part if we get the grant, but we want to see how much money we could get for electric, for an electric school bus or school buses. Once we are notified that we got the grant, then we'll take a look at how that will, how many buses and how that will impact our bus routes, which bus routes we might want to convert to electric school buses, if those routes, if the bridges can handle the weight of a school bus, all those things that are instrumental in determining whether or not electric school bus implementation will be successful. So more to follow on that. They did apply for the grant. We endorsed their application. Then we'll see where it goes from there.
So I just want to make a comment. We don't have to accept the grant funding, but we put in for it and, and so it's done in a timely manner. So we're not going to be owning buses here, right? Beacon Mobility will own the buses. But one way or another, we're going to pay for it, whether it's in the contract that we have to enter into because we don't have our own fleet. So there'll be a cost to the district. It's a matter of can we secure funding for, with Beacon Mobility to minimize those costs to us? So more to come, but we have to look into it. As Vince said, this is not, it doesn't appear that this is going to be changed or going away.
Danny?
It's a little disappointing that our governor has stated an unfunded mandate, but have we done anything internal to see if our bus garage can support X number of chargers? Have we looked nationwide to see what the safety record is of some of these electric school buses? There's, there's a lot I think we can probably do as a district to see if this is even feasible to maybe even present something to state leadership that this small community cannot support this.
That's part of the study that has to happen to see through, through Beacon Mobility. They have to work with the municipality, I'm sorry, the supplier, the utility, Central Hudson in this case, to see if the infrastructure in the village can handle charging school buses and how many, how far the route is, whether the charge of the school bus can handle it. So those are things that all the school business officials and as well as NYSERTA and the contractors and bus manufacturers have been looking at. All of those variables are what make it difficult to implement this, but, but they are being looked at and across a couple of years. So yeah.
I also want to add that there are associations like the New York State Council of School Superintendents that are heavily lobbying those concerns to the legislative branches and the governor because we are concerned about it. The problem is, is we don't want to lose a funding supporter opportunity. So nothing lost if we apply. We don't necessarily have to move forward with it, but if we can, if we can minimize the cost to us and we have to do it, we're hoping that this was going to get, you know, delayed so that there would be more time for the study and really the infrastructure to be put in.
Thank you. John?
Yeah, Vince, I think the governor's kept all of us in the dark on this. Nothing's been spoken about the deadline of when this all has to be done. And Lisa, you just mentioned costs. At a workshop I went to, they said that the average gas bus will cost you 125, 150,000. The electric buses will cost you between 350,000 and 400,000. Again, all the questions that Danny raises on space, they have to be so far apart because if one goes on fire, it just goes down the road. And nobody so far has said from any of the utilities companies that they could handle the charging. The last thing that the governor has not mentioned is that this needs to be approved over by a referendum of our voters. And I have a hard time believing that our voters are going to go for that, nor would I feel comfortable asking them to spend three times on a bus, what we already do when we don't know what the lifespan of that bus is and the continued costs. So Madam Superintendent, when you talk about increased costs, we're clearly going to use the brunt of that. And I'd rather have cost of 150,000 a bus that's reliable than 350 or 400,000 that we don't know because the bus company isn't absorbing that themselves.
Thank you. Iris?
Yeah, I just, I guess I'm a little confused for a change. So we're, we're applying for a grant, but we don't own buses. We, we contract with a bus company.
We are not applying for the grant. We endorsed or are in support of Beacon Mobility applying for this grant through NYSERTA. So they need our support in order to apply for the grant. If we said, no, we're not interested, then-
I mean, we have no intention of owning our own buses and building a garage and having a fleet or any of that.
Absolutely not.
Yeah. Okay, I'm sorry.
Being contracted is the way we have been working for 20 years.
But I just want to say to go to John's point, we're going to pay one way or the other. We're not going to buy the buses.
I understand that.
But the cost, the beacon, or any other contract, they'll pass it back down on to us.
Thank you. Move on to personal resolutions.
No, I'm sorry, I'm not done. Yeah, I have, I have one more thing. I do. I'm usually very quiet, I know. And you'll get to hear me over, over the next couple of weeks doing my budget presentations, but, but there is a topic in here that I, hopefully everyone had a chance to read.
Did you change your name to Willie Bruce?
And that there was some legislation passed where we can extend to firemen and ambulance workers, first responders, to get a discount on their property tax. We have to pass a resolution by March in order for this to take effect for the next taxing period. We've done this for the veterans and for the age. So we've done this before.
And volunteer firefighters too, I think, at it, right?
I said firemen, didn't I?
That's just now.
Yeah, thank you. So we, we don't have to decide tonight, but we have to decide soon if we want to move forward and pass the resolution.
We have, we have exemptions for some.
For who?
For veterans and also senior citizens.
Oh, okay.
I don't, I have to look.
I think we have firemen also, but we'll double check.
I thought we did too, but I don't know.
Me too. We'll get the list for you for the next meeting and check out the information that's in the packet that he included.
Vince, I just want to think you could help me with this one. So when, I would be in, in favor of helping anybody with tax relief, but we would lose, do you have a ballpark on what it would cost us in the tax revenue that we collect? And is the governor going to reimburse us for those costs?
Okay, so it doesn't work that way. If, let's say that I'm a fireman and I get a 10% on my property tax and I see a $300 savings, the district still levies that $300, but it gets spread out among the other taxpayers.
I don't think I understood what you're talking about.
So you have assessed valuation, right? And then let's say you have a-
Oh, I got it now.
You have a hundred, you have it, but you know, for people watching.
Yes, go ahead.
If, the more people that are exempt, right, the property burden falls to everybody else that's not exempt. That's the easiest way to put it. And I'm 99% sure that we have an exemption for firefighters. I think you should, we should look it up on Board Docs, but I think these are for first responders, so EMS and other things. But I, we'll get back to you on that.
All right, thank you. Move on to personal resolutions for this evening. Under 5.1, upon recommendation, Superintendent Schools.
President, I know that Kelly and Scott are not here. If we had a question on anything that they put into their information, can we ask that or do we want to wait till after?
I think we want to wait for them since they're-
I had a general one about it for, for Lisa, if she could help.
Sure.
Lisa, under Kelly's document at the bottom of her board report, she talked about, and listen, I know that Susan Ireland and Kelly and Scott and everybody have been working on trying to reduce our absenteeism rate, our chronic absenteeism rate, and we've dropped that by about 23% from what I could see since last year. I think that's great. But is this to bring in attendance mentors? great. But is this to bring in attendance mentors that are teachers to work with kids?
So my understanding, and we can clarify this at the next meeting, when we were looking at the best practices of a school district upstate, the Johnston School, City Schools or School District, this is one of the initiatives that they had where they had attendance monitors, not only teachers, but staff members that would work with, let's say, three students, get a stipend for it, that would be funded out of the school improvement grant. So when we wrote the school improvement grant, we included that initiative. That doesn't lock us in. We surely can modify the grant, but they, we did try to set aside some funds that could be considered for this. And I believe that they were modeling this initiative after the Johnston City Schools. It saw really a, a big, an impact from, from this, from students having connections and people following up. This is very preliminary, preliminary. There has to be expectations set. There has to be negotiations that go forward. We have to see if, if we even want to move forward with this. So.
I, I guess just because I saw that Kelly put in that this had been board-approved, but it was the plan, not necessarily this.
This hasn't been board-approved, so to speak. But the, the school improvement plan did come to the board with all the initiatives we were looking at.
And we, we still employ a attendance officer, right?
We do.
Okay.
Thank you. Move on to personnel resolutions for this evening. Five-point-one, final recommendation, Superintendent of Schools be resolved that Erin Disarmy's request to extend her unpaid leave of absence through February fourteenth, twenty-twenty-five be approved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one. Motion carries. Five-point-two, final recommendation, Superintendent of Schools be resolved that Sajia Stubblefield be appointed as a long-term substitute teacher.
Some of.
Moved and seconded, discussion. Lisa?
Oh, no.
Okay. All those in favor? Opposed? No one. Motion carries. Five-point-three, cafeteria monitor. Final recommendation, Superintendent of Schools be resolved the resignation of Kiana Francis as cafeteria monitor be accepted effective December eleventh, twenty-twenty-four. Done, moved and seconded?
Second.
Discussion? Why the previous date, December eleventh?
That was the date she submitted her letter of resignation.
Okay. Anybody else? All those in favor? Opposed? No one. Motion carries. Five-point-four, final recommendation, Superintendent of Schools be resolved the resignation of Audrey Otero. Cafeteria monitor be accepted effective January fourteenth, twenty-twenty-five. Moved. Second. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one. Motion carries. Teacher aide resignation. Final recommendation, Superintendent of Schools be resolved the resignation of Harriet Stico as a teacher aide be accepted for the purposes of her retirement effective January third, twenty-twenty-five, with regret.
Second.
I moved and seconded, discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one. Motion carries. Teacher aide employment. Final recommendation, Superintendent of Schools be resolved that Zonia Parvin be appointed a one-point-oh full-time equivalent teacher aide position at a prorated contractual rate of twenty-eight, one-three-seven. Step one, prorated effective January fifteenth.
So moved.
It's been moved.
Second.
Seconded, discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one. Motion carries. Five-seven, final recommendation, Superintendent of Schools be resolved that Tanya Castillo be appointed as a one-point-oh full-time equivalent teacher aide position at a contractual rate of twenty-eight, one-three-seven. Step one, prorated effective January fifteenth, twenty-twenty-five.
So moved.
Moved. Second. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one. Motion carries. Five-point-eight, substitute personnel. Final recommendation, Superintendent of Schools be resolved the following substitute personnel be appointed for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. List has been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Glad to see one of our retired teachers coming back. There are a couple of our, three of our retired teachers coming back. Very nice. All those in favor? Opposed? No one. Motion carries. Five-point-nine, extended day. Final recommendation, Superintendent of Schools be resolved the following junior, senior high school extended day personnel be approved. Contractual rate for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, it's been moved. Second. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one. Motion carries. Five-point-ten, professional development. Final recommendation, Superintendent of Schools be resolved that Ashley Aliano be approved for up to twelve hours of PD as described in the attached proposal to be completed between January fifteenth and April eighth, twenty-twenty-five.
Some of.
It's been moved. Is there a second? There's a second. All those in favor? Opposed? No one. Motion carries. Five-point-eleven, co-curricular. Final recommendation, Superintendent of Schools be resolved the following co-curricular personnel be approved at contractual rate.
Move the list, Mr. Zane.
The list has been moved. And do I have a second? It's been seconded. Discussion.
Has this started this year?
They did not start the ski club?
Yes.
They did not.
They're not gonna be able to get in, okay.
But they should be able to get in after it's approved.
Excellent.
When did we create a ski club?
We've had all these years.
Yeah. How many people are in the ski club?
I think it varies. Last year, we did not have one, I, I think.
When my kids were in, it was two full buses.
Right. Definitely one full bus.
Thank you. Anybody else? All those in favor? Opposed? I am abstaining as the one of those are one of my officers. Five-point-twelve, final recommendation, Superintendent of Schools be resolved that Ryan McIntyre be appointed as AP World History Review at a contractual rate of fifty-five dollars per hour work, not to exceed two hours per week effective March seventeenth through May eighth.
So moved.
Been moved. Seconded, discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one. Motion carries. Intramural sports. Final recommendation, Superintendent of Schools be resolved the following individual be approved for intramural sports for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year at a rate of forty-seven dollars per hour work.
Some of.
It's been moved. Seconded. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one. Motion Psychoeducational evaluations. Final recommendation, Superintendent of Schools be resolved that Teresa Shealy, Julia Cruz, and Aubrey Carcer Carmo.
How do you say her name?
Car-Caramo?
Car?
Car-Carma?
Car-Ramo?
Aubrey?
That's a tough one. Be approved to conduct and compete up to, complete up to total of fifty evaluations at their contractual hourly rate before and after. It's been moved. Second. Discussion. John?
So it, does this go to one of the shortages that we have in that area?
Yes. We're missing.
We're missing one-point-four.
Four FTE psychologists. We've been advertising, we haven't gotten any applications.
Just in, in the times that we're in, probably we'd rather have those positions filled. Have we taken any extraordinary steps to do this?
I, I'll double check.
Thank you. Anybody else? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? No one. Motion carries.
Budget resolutions. Somebody want to move those?
Move six-one through six-three.
Been moved. Second. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one. Motion carries. IEPs for this evening be resolved. Listen, attached list of student IEPs be acknowledged as appropriate. There are sixty.
Move the list.
List has been moved and seconded. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one. Motion carries. Somebody want to move construction resolutions?
Mr. President, move A-one through A-five.
Been moved.
Second.
Second. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one. Motion carries. Under other for this evening.
Move nine-one through nine-twelve.
Been moved.
Can I just ask a question about nine-one?
Sir, well, let me get it on the table first. It's only been moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion. Iris?
I just don't know what this is. It's nine-one, intermunicipal arrangement RTC ONE E Risk Operations Center. What is this? For what?
Give me a minute to read it, please.
This is a, it is, it is an agreement to work with the Mid-Hudson Regional Information Center regarding student privacy and entering, you have to have an intermunicipal agreement to authorize them to look at our privacy agreements with regard to data and the network. So you have to have a resolution to work with, giving the RIC permission to, to facilitate our privacy agreements in accordance with the regulations.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. President, do you think that if you read the entire six paragraphs, it would clear it up more?
I don't think so, but I appreciate you, John. No further discussion? All those in favor?
I want to vote in for.
Opposed? No one. Motion carries. Mark your calendars. We have a meeting set for next Tuesday. It'll be a construction meeting to kickoff, getting ready, getting our plans together to start going forward with our, you know, our referendum that was passed by the taxpayers. So we look forward to that. We're gonna get moving, get our feet on the ground, get going. Our next meeting after that, regular meeting, will be January twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five. Mark your calendars for that. Is there anything else?
Mr. President, will that meeting be covering all of the capital projects or just that one capital project?
It's the upcoming capital project. We're, all we're gonna be talking about is the timeline and the pacing of the schedules and the submittal of the plans.
Thank you.
Thank you. The President, would we consider going into executive session for one minute after this to address a question on personnel?
Yes, we can, we can definitely do that. We have a motion to retire into executive session, not to reconvene in public session. Moved and seconded, discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one. Motion carries.
Thank you.
We are in executive session and we will not reconvene.
You want these kids to leave?
Yeah, we will not reconvene.